It's another beautiful evening here in the territory of New Orleans, Louisiana. And you know we do it. In this studio with us is our brother Jolly. One of the most hard-working person in the city, man. One of the most hard-working Caribbean guy in the city, man, Jolly, you know. Family, look, we have a lot to discuss, we have a lot to discuss, we have a lot to talk about today. You know, we're going to be touching base on some of the current activities of this past week. You know, this is an issue that we need to keep on the forefront and we will keep on the forefront. Here it is, in a few months from now, the people of New Orleans going to be facing another tax proposition that going to be on the ballot as a constitutional amendment. Why? Who is pushing this? For what reason are they pushing this? Now, for those of you who can remember, it was in 2016 that they levy a proposition or a tax with the same argument, the same argument. What was the argument? That we need money for infrastructure, we need money for for repairs, we need money to purchase automobile for NOPD, okay? Now, check this out. Two weeks ago, for those of you who can remember, two weeks ago, the New Orleans City Council rejected a plan from Latoya Cantrell to put this proposition on the ballot for 2016. And rightfully so, I mean for 2019, November 2019, and rightfully so. What was the argument at that time? At that time, the argument was the proposition itself wasn't clear. The proposition was not clear. It was ambiguous, okay? The argument was if you're going to ask the people of New Orleans to bear a financial burden as it relates to infrastructure, as it relates to repairing our drainage system, you must utilize that money for that purpose and that purpose only. And that was a solid argument, that was a good argument. That was certain members of the New Orleans City Council representing the people of New Orleans. Now, listen to what I'm saying carefully, family. This is one of the ways, or this is one of the the thinking process that people, that these politicians use to get around certain things, or use to get what they want. They push certain proposition and the public at large ain't knowledgeable enough about these proposition. Follow, follow what I'm saying carefully. I'm going really slow here and I'm trying to make it as simple as possible because this is important. The people of New Orleans are sick and tired of being taxed, of tax burden. And the repetitiveness of these taxes for the same purpose or for the same issue or for the same reason. The people of Louisiana, the people of New Orleans, for far too long have been hearing that, hey, we need money for infrastructure, we need money towards drainage system, we need money towards whatever it is. In 2016, family, this same argument that is posed today was posed in 2016. And that amendment, that proposition was for a period of 30 years. Now, look, I left school some time ago and, you know, I don't know, maybe my math, maybe my calculation is different from theirs or from yours, but 2016 to now, according to my calculation, that's just two, three years. 2016, 2017, 2018, 2019. So that's two and a half, three years according to my calculation. The proposition that was there was for 30 years. So here it is, we are overlapping, we are now overlapping. So what happened to that money, what they collected for the past couple of years? Now, two weeks ago, again, the resolution that was submitted to the New Orleans City Council stated that some of that money was going towards cybersecurity defense. Cybersecurity defense and cars for NOPD. Now, we have issues with those two allegations or with those two expenditures. One, it was just two years ago that the people of New Orleans spent over $40 million towards cybersecurity. $40 million towards cybersecurity. If you should drive around New Orleans, you would notice at certain major intersection, you will see this red and blue light keep flashing, okay? Not only that, but we also have now what they call a state-of-the-art command center. A state-of-the-art command center. And when you go inside that state-of-the-art command center, you will see humongous monitors, electronic devices, computerized equipment that have to do with cybersecurity, right? And have to do with electronic devices and electronic information that is gathered and stored by whichever department it is that fall underneath Latoya Cantrell's portfolio. Latoya Cantrell know well that she could never come to the people of New Orleans and ask us directly again for any money for cybersecurity. So what did she do? She sneak that amendment or she sneak that as a pork fat into the resolution two weeks ago. She also asked for money to purchase automobile for NOPD under the previous administration, under Mitch Landrieu administration. Now, look, for those of you who tend to forget or have a lapse in memory, listen to what I'm saying carefully. During the time of that criminal Mitch Landrieu administration, you know Mitch Landrieu, come on, that same guy who is now on CNN as a political commentator for the Democratic Party or the Democrats who want to be president come next year, yeah, that same guy. Here it is that, under his administration, right? And during his administration, family, for those of you who, again, who tend to forget, Latoya Cantrell, your mayor, the one who presently sit as the CEO/mayor for the municipal corporation city of New Orleans, also sit on the New Orleans City Council for two full term, representing or claimed to representing the political subdivision District B. So she's fully aware of this. Mitch Landrieu spend hundreds of thousands of dollars, hundreds of thousands of dollars purchasing automobile for that one department, the department of NOPD. And what was his argument? What was Mitch's argument for spending so much tax dollars to purchase automobile? His argument was simple. He needed those automobiles to give to members of NOPD to boost their morals. Hold up, hold up. You heard what I just said? Tax dollars was utilized as a means of bribe, as a means of to, to, you know, I call it a bribe. Them can call it whatever they want to call it. But what Mitch called it or what Mitch stated was that it would boost the morale of members of NOPD. Latoya Cantrell know that she could have never come to the people of New Orleans, never come to us and ask us directly again for monies to... She could never ask our permission directly to bear a financial burden to purchase automobiles for NOPD. She know this. So what she, what did she do? Again, she sneak that proposition onto the resolution two weeks ago to the New Orleans City Council. Now, this New Orleans City Council defer it, defer that resolution until this Thursday, stating that it was too broad and she need to be mindful that the people of New Orleans was about to face another high or another property tax. Now, we know what happened, family, we know what happened. Latoya Cantrell make the rounds. Latoya Cantrell make the rounds. She went and she promised them whatever it is that she promised them. She went ahead and she basically instruct them that, look, we need to pass this and you need to come on board. What did the members of the New Orleans City Council did? They kissed the ring of Latoya Cantrell and said, yes, ma'am. Now, that's not good for we the people. That's not good for the people of New Orleans. That's not good for the people of Louisiana. We are going to be, we are going to be paying... Now, this is the argument according to the member of the New Orleans City Council why they passed this resolution this past Thursday. They are saying that, look, it's now up to the people, it's now up to the people to vote on this proposition when it hits the ballot come November 6, 2019. Our argument is that it shouldn't reach the point where the people of New Orleans, where the people of Louisiana have to go to the ballot and vote on this proposition. Now, again, as I stated before, yes, it is a constitutional amendment that will be on the ballot. However, the argument is it's only going to affect the people of New Orleans. And if that's the case, if that's truly the case, why is it do we have a constitutional amendment? Or why it is being offered as a constitutional amendment? If it's going to only affect the people of New Orleans? Let me read for you the proposition that Latoya Cantrell, your mayor, the mayor of New Orleans, submitted to the New Orleans City Council to which they approve. And after finish reading it, I will tell you, well, for those of you who ain't quick or savvy enough to catch the reason why this proposition was being passed. Let's do this. This is what is on the ballot. Millage Proposition. Shall the city of New Orleans, Louisiana, the city in bracket, be authorized to levy a special tax of three mils on all property subjected to taxation in the city for a period of 20 years, beginning January 1st, 2020 and ending December 31st, 2039? $10,000, I'm sorry, $10,250,000 currently estimated to be collected from the tax for an entire year with the proceeds of the tax to be dedicated solely for the purpose of, one. Now, that word swell, let me read it fully and then I come back. One, repairing and rehabilitating roads, streets, bridges and surface and subsurface drainage system and storm water management facilities in the city. And two, purchasing and acquiring equipment, comma, software and other technology, comma, vehicles, comma, furnishings and other public improvements for the city, comma. Title to which shall remain in the public provide that a portion of these monies collected shall be remitted to certain state and statewide retirement system in the manner required by law. Now, look, for those of you who didn't get it, we're going to do it again. But one of the first problems that we have here, issue that we have here, that we have been speaking about for quite some time, for those of you who have been following us and this and many other platforms, is the fact that the properties or there are properties to which the tax assessor is levying these taxes, these properties shouldn't be on his tax roll. Now, let me restate something that's on the proposition. And for those of you who need to check, you can go and check the Louisiana Constitution as well, Article 7. Listen to what? Listen to the argument, listen to the statement, listen to the wording. Levying a special tax of three mil on all properties subjected, the underline word is subjected to taxation. Now, that's one argument we're going to leave for next year, 2020. That's one argument we have been speaking about for quite some time. Property to which this avalarum tax is subjected. Here it is that they are asking for over $10 million annually based on their calculation. They supposed to reek in $10 million annually. Now, $10 million. It was a few weeks ago that Latoya Cantrell received from John Bell Edwards over $50 million. So if we should be practical and we look at this $10 million or $10.2 million that they're supposed to receive annually starting from January, beginning January 1st, 2020, right? It's going to take four years, close to five years to achieve that $50 million that Latoya Cantrell just received from John Bell Edwards. Now, the question is, family, the question is, where is that $50 million that Latoya Cantrell just received two weeks or three weeks ago from John Bell Edwards towards infrastructure? Where's that money? Look, I don't know, but can anybody show me where there's any work going on in New Orleans as it relates to infrastructure? I could be wrong, you know? I could be wrong. And if I'm wrong, somebody need to tell me that I'm wrong. Where is the work? Where is the contracts that have been given out as it relates to that $50 million that she just received from John Bell Edwards towards infrastructure? Here it is that $10 million. Now, look, in 2027, there was an estimate given by, from, by the Sewage and Water Board that it will take approximately $5.7 billion to totally repair the drainage system here in New Orleans, Louisiana, totally repair the drainage system here in New Orleans, Louisiana. In 2015, we know that $2 billion was spent uptown New Orleans on the drainage system. We know that. We also know that post-Katrina, $71 billion came here into Louisiana to assist with the disaster, to assist with what was going on here post-Katrina, we know that. We know that there was money allotted just for infrastructure purposes, just for drainage purposes. We know that. Where's that money? We know that FEMA, we know that FEMA gave to the tune of $101 million with the assurance that they would continue to furnish or to give more money towards infrastructure. We know that. Where's that money? Sewage and Water Board as an entity have a monopoly on this, on the water system. Sewage and Water Board as an entity have a monopoly over the Sewage and Water Board system, over the, over the business of providing water for the people of New Orleans. They have a monopoly. They asked back in 2014, 2013 for an increase in the water, for an increase for the, for the people of New Orleans to bear an additional financial burden so that they could address infrastructure. What happened to all that money? Now, for those of you who have access to Facebook and even if you don't have a Facebook page yourself, I would recommend you find somebody who have a Facebook page and go to my page, go to my page. For those of you who is following us online right now, much love. Appreciate you guys checking in. For those of you listening to us on the E-Wave, again, you are listening to 102.3, 102.3 on your FM band, WHIV. You can go to your cousin, your niece, your neighbor or somebody and go to their Facebook page and you can log on to my Facebook page, which is Anthony Brown for Assessor 2017, Anthony Brown for Assessor 2017. And on that page, you'll see a document. Now, this is a document that, this is the actual proposition and this is my actual copy that I had when I went, when I was there at City Hall this past Thursday. And this is me marking up, this is my copy that I mark up, red flag, red flag, red flag. The moment I picked this document up, it was red flag. Everything I saw, it was red flag. Now, for those of you who think that the members of the City Council or even the mayor cares about we the people or really cares about infrastructure or the repair thereof, you need to go and read this document for yourself. And that is the reason why I posted on my Facebook page. Because one of the thing, what these politicians know for a fact is that people, one, don't find this issue interesting, two, they are so sick and tired and fed up of paying property tax, three, they know that because of the whole hustle and bustle, you have to be out there fighting to sustain life. You don't have time to, to go and do your own research or to read. They know this. They know this, family, and they strive off of this. So what happened? And they know that, and look, they take it for granted that you think that these politicians wouldn't do nothing that would cause harm to you. But look, your brother is on the job, I'm on the job and I'm staying on the job. And just so you know, full disclosure, I ain't getting paid for this, all right? This is why they passed this measure. This is why the New Orleans City Council caved in. This is why they went and kissed the ring of Latoya Cantrell, the last paragraph. Provided that a portion of the monies collected shall be remitted... What does the word remitted mean? Means to deliver, means to send, means to accept, means to give to certain state and statewide retirement syst... Did you catch that? Retirement. These people are looking out for their own retirement plan. They are looking, they are working towards their retirement fund when they leave public office. That's what they're looking out for. Not, not for what is best for the people of New Orleans. They don't care about that. Go read the document. Go read it. It's there in black and white for all of you who think that, you know, look. It was, when was it, last month? I start to have problem with my eyes, you know? Look, we're family, I can share something with you guys, we're family. I start to have problem with my eyes. So, you know, now, you know, when I look in, when I look on documents really close, I have to wear this, this glasses, you know? It's not that comfortable, but I have to wear it, you know what I mean? Yeah, for real, for real. Now, the truth about it, when I wear the glasses, I kind of see, I see the words much, much better, you know, to be honest with you. But this is what I'm saying. Maybe I'm missing something here or maybe I'm not seeing what is on the paper. So, look, it's out there. Provided that a portion of the monies collected shall be remitted to certain state and statewide retirement system in a manner provided by law, huh? Two weeks ago, they claimed that the proposition was ambiguous, right? They claimed that it was ambiguous. They claimed that it needs to be, yeah, they claims that it needs to be precise. Now, what is precise about this? Purchasing and acquiring equipment, comma. What kind of equipments? What kind of equipments you talking about here? Is this clear? Okay, let's go to this one. Software and other technology. Other techn... What is other technology? What's clear about that? Vehicle, now, two weeks... Vehicle, now, two weeks ago, they had vehicles for NOPD. Now, they dropped that and they just have vehicles. Vehicles for who? For what? Who, who should we? Or why should we bear a financial burden to purchase vehicles? To who? For Latoya Cantrell? For Jacy Williams? For state, um, for, for, for Cindy Winn? For Jay Banks? For Christine Palmer? For who? Why should we do this? For Jared Bushet? Who purchasing vehicle for? Furnishing, hey, look, what is furnishing? What that mean furnishing? F U R N I S H I N G, furnishing and other public improvement for the city. What is that? Furnishing and other public improvement for, what is that? Now, here it is, here it is, they are saying that it is ambiguous. Two weeks ago. Two weeks ago, it was ambiguous, right? If it was ambiguous two weeks ago, I don't know what to call this, family. I really don't know what to call this. Cause this, this way past ambiguous. This is way, way past ambiguous. We, the people of New Orleans have no to decide or have no on the ballot. It's a done deal, you know? It's a done deal, believe that. Believe that. Once they voted on this Thursday, all they're gonna do is send this to their other cronies in Baton Rouge and say, look, ensure that this is on the ballot. That's all gonna happen, it's a done deal. So now, people is gonna be voting on a purpose. Now, look, I've said many a times before and many a different platforms that, look, whenever it comes to taxation, more so here in the territory of New Orleans, Louisiana. And if you don't have a clue what it is or what it's all about, by default, my brothers and sisters, by default, you need to vote no. By default, you need to vote no. These people, these politicians, they won't take the time to explain this to you. They won't. And when they do, they are gonna lie to you. They lied to us, they lied to us Thursday about this. Latoya Cantrell lied to us about this. She lied to us about the reason for this proposition to be on the ballot. Again, for those of you who missed it, the underlying issue, the underlying reason is that we have a crisis. Our system, our infrastructure, as it relates to the drainage is decaying. It's decaying. And we need to take drastic measures to repair such. Now, the truth about it, again, if that's true, if we should accept that argument to be true and to be factual, how is it that there is no work? How is it that there is no contract given out as yet? She received 50 million dollars. She went and she asked for over 70 million. Her daddy, John Bell Edwards said, no. Hey, family, a matter of fact, you see what's going on? Hey, Jolly, you know what's going on, my brother? You know that there is two Democrats running against John Bell Edwards? I think there's like six persons running against, running, running, um, against him for, for the governorship, you know? Um, two Democrats, right? Now, look, normally, we have a democratic governor in the office, right? No, all the other Democrats sit by the wayside. But here it is, you have two Democrats, so you know things ain't, ain't, ain't gravy inside the camp. You see what I'm talking about? And I think you like four or five Republicans. But look, let me tell you something, man. We can't endorse no one who ain't looking out for the people. And none of these politicians ain't looking out for us, man. None of these politicians ain't looking out for us. You see? You see what I'm talking about? Hey, look, uh, uh, family, we're gonna take a, give me the one. We're, we, 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 we're gonna take, um, we're gonna take a, 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 a quick break. Uh, for those of you who is on, uh, social media, uh, we're gonna, we, we, we're gonna, uh, we're gonna end it right here, then we're gonna actually, um, we're gonna, no, we're, we're gonna end it right here and come back after the, uh, after the break. We're good?